Unmuted, sir. Tom. Where's Tom?
Good evening, or afternoon, I guess. Welcome to our study meeting in West Valley City Council. We will begin as required by hearing a statement on our electronic meeting. Pursuant to Utah Code, West Valley City has determined that this meeting will be held electronically, without an anchor location, given the ongoing novel coronavirus COVID-19 pandemic. West Valley City has determined the pandemic presents a substantial risk to the health and safety of those who may be present at an anchor location. This meeting will be held electronically. Members of the press and public are invited to view this meeting live on YouTube Thank you. That gets us in order for our electronic meeting. We are meeting electronically, and members of the public can join us, but only electronically. We have five members of the council present. That's electronically. That's a quorum. We're excusing Councilwoman Lang tonight, and I believe Councilwoman Hune will join us shortly. With that, then, we'll begin as we always do with our minutes of May, and these today are of May 4. Excuse me, wait a minute. Yes, that's right, May 4. If anyone would like to make a motion or discuss them further, that's fine. Move to approve the minutes of May 4.
Second.
Properly before us. Hearing no further comments, then. Without objection, the minutes will be approved. Hearing no objection. That was unanimous. Next, reviewing our regular meeting agenda for later tonight. There have been no changes or updates or additional information. Any other questions that council members may have? Hearing none. We'll go to our public hearing that will be scheduled for next week. This is regarding impact fee, facilities planned and analysis, and then updating our various fees for drainage park, road, fire, and police. In conjunction with that, we will consider next week Resolution 21-75 and Ordinance 21-27. With that, then, Mr. Pastrick, it looks like you're ready to tell us all about these changes. There are quite a few.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Council. We also have with us this evening Fred Philpott from Lewis Young and Kai Tounaka from Parametrics. They were the consultants that helped us prepare these documents. So the impact, the facilities plan and the impact fee analysis. And so if there are any detailed questions about those documents, they're available for questions. Our last update to our impact fees was done in 2015. Much has changed since then, and there's really a lot of different sources of information that go into calculating our impact fees. So just to give you a sample of some of the information that's changed. So we've had new facilities constructed since then. For example, the police headquarters was completed. Land and improvement costs have gone up. We've had the city's population increase since then, so that factors into the fees. We've had changes in household sizes. We've had some of our transportation, just the number of trips generated by different uses. Those numbers have been updated by organizations that generate those figures. And so many of the inputs to the impact, the analysis have changed since 2015. And so it was actually back in 2019 that council authorized the expenditure to do, to update the fees. So we've worked with our consulting partners to do that. And for the most part, the impact, the changes have resulted in increases. There are some exceptions to that. And you can see in the ordinance, each of the difference of fees by different land uses. And so the fees do vary by land use. And you can see how much those are changing by for each individual land use. And I'm happy to go into any, or answer any questions and go into any detail. But that just provides an overview of why the change is. And again, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council members. Councilman Christensen.
Mr. Pastrick, the one question that I have is that some of those fees were raised, very minor changes made. Others, there were some fairly massive changes. Why the massive changes?
Sure. So in some cases, for example, I know that there was a convenience store that saw a big increase. So one of the main reasons for some of the changes had to do with a change in the methodology that was recommended by Parametrics. And so in the previous analysis that was done back in 2015, we looked at peak hour trips, so meaning the number of trips generated during the, like, the morning commute and the, or the evening commute, so the evening commute time. This latest analysis looks at traffic throughout the day. And so there are certain uses that tend to have more traffic generated in the peak hour as opposed to throughout the day. And so with that shift in methodology, there were some uses that saw a pretty substantial increase because they generate traffic throughout the day and not just during the peak hour.
Okay?
Okay, thank you.
Could you also make a statement or two on the drainage fees? These are ones where it looks like you either have it or you don't. And so it goes from zero to 1,300, or it goes from 2,200 down to zero. So what's the general rationale there? Is it just once it's in, it's done? Or what?
Right. So there are some areas where the, where you see the zero, where the infrastructure's in place. The ones that still have a fee, there's still improvements that are needed. In one instance, we went, we had a fee, and then it went to zero. And that one, that one specific instance is, we had a reimbursement agreement with Salt Lake County where it was more in the southwest part of the city. And that reimbursement agreement has since expired. And so the idea was at that time that we would collect a fee. And then because the facilities were provided by Salt Lake County, the city would reimburse the county. But now that that reimbursement agreement has expired, in that particular area where the city doesn't have stormwater infrastructure, the developer would just need to coordinate with West Jordan to provide or to connect to their system.
Okay, thank you. Hearing no further comments. Thank you very much, Steve. We'll now go to Resolution 21-76 to approve the purchase of an electric vehicle. And so on this, Mr. Pyle, I believe you wanted to make some comments to start with.
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to introduce the item and kind of give the council a drift for what we're doing and what we're trying to accomplish here. So you'll notice that we are actually proposing to purchase this out of fund balance, just as general fund, but fund balance is really where we're looking for because it's not a part of the General Fleet Division Annual Replacement Series. What we're doing here is, and you guys will be remembering part of this conversation because it has involved you as well, as we're looking out towards the future of fleet sales, automotive, technology, the kinds of changes that we're going to see in the upcoming years, I decided that it would be a good idea to start getting familiar with what those changes and challenges are going to mean from a fleet management standpoint. So I asked Mr. Madsen, our fleet manager, to go out and find for me a vehicle or two that we could experiment with, that was all-electric, not hybrid, not gasoline or diesel, and start experimenting with what kind of uses they would be appropriate for, what kind of maintenance challenges we were going to have, what sort of relationships that would give us with, and how those relationships would be different with various manufacturers. And just generally start getting a feel for what the implications were going to be for having electric vehicles in our fleet. We by no means believe that within the next year or two, we're going to have substantial numbers of electric vehicles in our fleet. But certainly, it does look like within, say, 10 years, we probably will. So again, I wanted to get some experience in that realm. So I asked Mr. Madsen to go out, find a couple or three manufacturers from which we might obtain a vehicle. And what I was looking for was some sort of a truck, not necessarily a sedan. And what he was able to come up with that is actually available is a Tesla compact SUV model. We also have put down a little bit of money, like a $1,000 deposit, on an actual full-size pickup truck of the Rivian brand, if any of you have heard of it. But that won't be available from a projected standpoint until sometime next year, is what we're hearing at the earliest. So I asked Mr. Madsen to go out, find out what it would cost, whether there is availability, what kind of contracting it would take for us to order, purchase, and take delivery of one of these vehicles. Hence where we are tonight. Tesla is the only manufacturer currently that has electric vehicles that we could test for that purpose. So I asked him to go out and spec that, find out what we could get and when we could get it delivered. And that's what he has been able to find. If you have any technical questions about the Tesla itself, he's going to be better equipped to answer that than I am. So feel free, we can have him come forward to do that. Also, on the other brand as well, the Rivian, I will tell you, we are already learning things about this process in that Tesla as a manufacturer, for example, is not really set up yet to do governmental fleet sales. We were having some troubles getting them to understand and set up the account for a sales tax exempt account, how the order process actually worked and all that. But we're working through those kinks, just like I wanted to experience in terms of starting to deal with these vehicles. So we're on our way. We can take a delivery of this vehicle within, I think it's a matter of a few weeks, if I remember right. Eric can correct or sort of home in that estimate for me. And so we're ready to give this a try. So if you have any questions, counsel for me, or if you have any questions from a technical standpoint on the vehicle itself, or Eric, feel free.
Counsel, sure. I have some questions. I don't know if you want to answer them, Wayne or Eric. But, you know, I have seen commercials, the one I recall is for Ford saying, "In so many years, they're going to have electric cars and so forth." I'm wondering, right now, you're saying the only maker are these two that are fully electric. But my concern is, you know, we buy this Tesla, everybody drives around and loves it. And so then we buy 50 Fords and have problems with them. I don't know that we would be moving into Teslas like, let's try a gas-powered car. And we buy Jaguar and drive it around and then, you know, think, well, that's great. But then we're not buying Jaguars, we're buying something else.
Right, right.
I'm concerned that the data that we get from driving the Tesla around might not translate to actual future fleet purchases.
Yeah. So speaking to that, there is some data that I believe will be, and again, I actually will have Eric sort of follow me up here. But the data that I would like to gain from owning an electric vehicle from any manufacturer we could get right now is that in a lot of ways, the maintenance setup, how the electric motors work, how they're set up in the cars, from a general principle standpoint, are going to be similar. Longevity of batteries, that's also going to improve over the next two to five to 10 years. But good for us to gain that general experience from a warranty standpoint, from a servicing standpoint, that sort of thing. You're absolutely right that just because we buy this Tesla now doesn't mean we're going to go to all Tesla fleet over the next 10 years. In fact, I would say the likelihood is, you're probably right. We probably are going to be more likely to be with an all-electric Ford fleet, for example, for pickups, if the technology gets there that fast. But there is expertise, familiarity, knowledge to be gained from getting into this sector of knowledge that not only has to do with the general technology of the vehicle itself in terms of electric vehicles, but again, like I was saying, even just relationships with these manufacturers at all, are they going to work? Do we like them? Are they going to be around? This Rivian brand, for example, is one that looks really good on paper. And they are actually, they have had prototypes, they are a real vehicle. But are they going to make it as an overall entity? We don't know. And maybe we won't buy one from between now and next year. Maybe they won't even actually get it produced. But we also did reach out to Ford and GM because both of them have trucks that are supposedly coming online. But neither one of them were within, if I remember right, again, Eric can speak to this, even within a year of being available. So that's why we decided to go with this one to start looking at testing, evaluating. Eric, do you have anything else you wanted to add to that?
No, I think you really hit it on the head. You're right, you are seeing commercials of them saying, you know, we got the best thing out there. And their claims may be true, but you'd call them and try to get something set up to where we could test it and drive it. And Ford, for instance, their F-150, I believe it's going to be called the Lightning. It's a full 100% electric vehicle, but they're saying mid-2022 before you could take delivery. I just, I feel like the Tesla is the way to go. It's got a proven track record. I think it'll be a good one to get our feet wet with. That's about it.
Well, I'm glad we're buying one and trying it out rather than, you know, making an overhaul or an entire department or an entire purchase or something, and then maybe not being satisfied with it. I think that getting familiar with the, that kind of a shift in vehicles is a good idea. I'm just a little concerned that we might like the Tesla so much that we think we're going to like the Ford, and then we don't like the Ford.
They'd be heck of undercover cars.
Eric, you mentioned in the issue paper that you'd be kind of moving this around between all the departments.
Yes, sir.
Seeing what each department needed rather than just planning on one department.
Right. If not one shoe fits all, we'll try to plan it out and get some data back and forth from each of them and see where it works, see where it doesn't. I mean, I think there's, the possibilities could be endless.
Oh, yeah. Are we looking at possibly putting it in patrol with?
No, I don't think it'll go into patrol. It might go into detectives for some time and do some surveillance or something like that.
Much like we've got the hybrids right now.
Yeah. You know, and they've worked out darn good for us. Wayne came up with that in 2007, and now we have about 76 of them in the fleet. And they've really been a good fit for us.
Will we have our charging stations installed so that we can recharge these at the end of the day?
We have them over at the parking structure now. We have two of them. And then it does come with one kit to take home, and you plug it into your normal wall. And it's not a very fast charge, but this model is supposedly going to go 326 miles between charges. That's kind of, that's top of the line, leading the industry in that kind of mileage for a crossover SUV.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hearing no further comments or questions? Okay. Then we'll go on to our consent agenda for next week. We have two resolutions, 21-77, 21-78. Now, 21-78 is another one of the routine ones on 2700 West, right-of-way purchase, warranty deed, perpetual easements, temporary construction easements. However, 21-77 is a little different. This one is for two temporary turnaround easements. Before we have dead-end streets. Do you have any specific questions on either of those? The turnaround easements we've done before, that's just not as routine, but it is still a routine-type thing. Hearing no further comments, then we'll go to our communications. Our first communication is the purpose of streets. And let's see, is this, Russ, it's going to, Russ Willardson's going to come forward and tell us a little bit about this.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, a couple of weeks ago, the council asked that we prepare a little information on the purpose of streets, and that's why I'm here tonight. So this will be pretty basic, though. There are, Eric, can you bring that up? I don't know if that's on the screen already.
Yeah, I was attached to that discussion item. Okay, I'll tell a few jokes or something. But so there are basically five principal functions that we've identified as of streets, first being mobility, the ability to move people and to move goods and services from place to place, access to businesses and residents. It's the location of our drainage facilities and utilities. And it can all, streets can also provide parking. And they can also be a sense of place or fill a role in the public realm of a meeting place, a social interaction place. So obviously, all of those roles cannot be filled by the same streets. And some of those are contrasting functions, and some are more complementary. You know, if we have a street that's a busy street, it's not a good location for a sidewalk cafe, for example. Or, you know, oftentimes on a busy street, more so with UDOT highways than with city streets, but access is restricted in order to provide for better mobility. So there's, you know, there's trade-offs back and forth between those different functions of different streets. And parking is one that also has the same kind of trade-offs. We had a situation years ago when Bangor Highway was first opened, and we had massive backups of traffic on 4100 South, where we had a two-lane section and a wide shoulder that was used for parking. And at the time, the decision was made to eliminate the parking on the shoulder of the road so that we could have three through lanes in each direction at that location. So that, I mean, that's one example of, you know, prioritizing the one use above another use on a street. And 4100 South is a collector's street, so it made sense to do that there. The streets are public right-of-way, though. The city streets are, you know, up to the city to determine how those streets are used and which of these different examples or different functions are prioritized on those streets. I just talked about, you know, parking may or may not be allowed in that example we had on 4100 South. And, you know, we do have some, you know, obviously, in subdivision streets, generally, parking is allowed. But there are areas, and there are times when we've, when we have precluded parking or prohibited parking in some areas on the public streets because proximity to high schools and the high school kids overwhelming the neighborhood with their parked vehicles. Or in the case of Salt Lake City, I think you have to have a permit to park on the street in the avenues area because of, you know, the limited amount of parking that's available there. But generally speaking, that parking on the streets is available to anyone. And it's not exclusively reserved for the adjacent property owner. It's available to any member of the public. The next slide is, kind of outlines the prohibitions on parking and from our various ordinances, which you can see there. And in addition to that, we, you know, parking is prohibited whenever there's snow on the roads and to allow our snowplows to get to the streets and to clear them. So, you know, honestly, when you look at all of those different restrictions, if you get into a residential area, particularly cul-de-sacs, that doesn't leave very much room, if any, for parking, at least, you know, during the daytime hours when it's, parking near a mailbox is prohibited. And finally, the areas that the city enforces no parking are only on city streets. And there are other streets within the city that are private streets, such as in planned development, gated communities, mobile home parks, and apartment complexes. And even in some parking lots, then what may look like a street is. And, and even in some parking lots, then what may look like a street is, is just a part, a part of the parking lot. And the city does not have jurisdiction there and does not enforce parking restrictions on those streets. So that's all I had to present tonight. So if I can help answer any questions on that, I would be happy to.
Just to emphasize, I think that no one has authority over public streets other than the city or other government entities such as state or something like that, depending on the street. I know we've had several individuals who have tried to accomplish restricting parking in front of their home or business by putting up no parking signs, not the city, but an individual. And those actually are illegal.
That's correct. Certainly if, you know, if any, if any resident or business has concerns about it, they're, you know, free to contact our department and we would take a look at it and see if there's a legitimate reason to preclude parking.
Thank you. This is a great summary to have on record, given the discussion that we've been having recently. And it's nice to have this officially as part of our record now to show anyone who would like to look at it. I know one of the major complaints comes from people who live on cul-de-sacs. But the reality is that that's always going to be a problem. It's already a problem with people who do not have a lot of street frontage to park on that. I was on, lived on one here in West Valley for a number of years. And if I parked in the front of my house, not in front of the driveway, then I parked in front of the mailbox because I couldn't, there wasn't enough room to do anything else. That's how narrow it was. So when a repairman came or whatever, or I had visitors, they either parked in front of my neighbor's houses or in my driveway. And that is going to not get less as the number of people who live in our city increases.
Yes, and it's difficult to find a place to push snow in those cul-de-sacs as well.
Yes, yes, those are issues. Thank you. Appreciate you doing that. Comments?
I have a comment, Russ. Thank you for the presentation. I was actually going to bring this up as a report or future agenda item, but I want to bring it up while you're here. And you and Wayne can both take this back and decide what to do with this information. Years and years ago, the neighborhood just south of Granger High asked for and received no parking signs during school hours and those are still up. But some of the residents have come to me and said, since they built the new Granger High, which is further north, with lots and lots of parking between the school and the houses, that they don't think there's any problem anymore and they'd like to be able to park there themselves. So if we could maybe take a look at having those signs removed, if that's appropriate.
Yes.
Excellent idea.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, things do change over time and so we need to constantly evaluate that. Still can't figure out the snow and parking issue.
It's a tough one.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, even the mayor, mayors of other cities have found out they can't push snow in the cul-de-sacs without permission. Yeah, interesting. All right, let's see. Our next communication is Healthy West Valley Committee Discussion. And as a little addition to that, we've got some information about committees in general and how those are set up and some guidelines. So, Mr. Pyle, any, just a general comment here, what the information is?
Yeah, you bet. Thank you, Mayor. So I got myself lost on my meeting agenda here. Here it is. I'm back again. We don't have a presentation per se, but we have gone back as a staff at the request of the council and looked at what it would take, what are the, what are the requirements and what kinds of setups do some of the various city committees that we have out there consist of. And we prepared this table or memo, if you will, that sort of shows in kind of a matrix style of what those are and what would be required. And the purpose we did in that was just to give you as a council maximum flexibility in which to discuss this topic. Of course, the, the particular purpose of this discussion was about the possibility of forming a Healthy West Valley committee, which we stand ready to support, whatever direction the council takes there and wants to do. The viability of these committees in the past and proven through time has really been all about the volunteers themselves. And, and are there enough people to make these work? And, and how much do they really desire to do that? And I'm sure that in this case, that would really still be the same salient question there. Goals and objectives are fairly well established, I think, already. There's also a good level of volunteer participation. So the question is really more in terms of, is that organization and you as a council ready to support taking the next step towards testing that commitment to viability in those goals and moving on from there? So that's really all the introductory commentary I had there, but we can also answer any questions coming from the memo itself. Or we're just planning on letting the council have open discussion on this as requested.
I appreciate that. I think in, and with Councilman Christiansen being the other active member in representation of the city council on Healthy West Valley, I think there definitely is a willingness on the part of the volunteers or the group itself to move forward into a more formal organization within the city. And so my question to that would be, what does that look like in terms of operation or logistic steps? Is there an application to fill out? Is there, you know, a specific person that we work with within staff that's to define the parameters and the objectives of the group, et cetera? Where do we go from, from here?
So staff answering the logistical question there. Jake, really who I would assign, there really is no like application process. But what we would do is upon the council's desire to move forward, I would assign Nicole K. Mac, the recorder to, to kind of help you along in that process or you and Don and/or whoever else was spearheading that effort.
You know, having served on, oh, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to ask about the, the council approval part of that, which was alluded to that comes up as a resolution or how does that go?
I'm going to have Nicole weigh on, in on this, but my memory is it's actually created by, well, there you go. If it's the ad hoc committee or the middle row there of the, the matrix, you can do it by executive order, ordinance or resolution, depending on what type. If it's a, the most formal version, that would be by ordinance. Nicole, have you got anything to chime in there with in terms of recommended order? Or is that really just sort of up to how we want to establish this? I will, I will point out before Nicole comments. So if it seems like we're a little unsure of this, it's because we haven't done one of these in a long, long time. So it's really is kind of an exercise in going back and seeing what we did some time ago.
Yes, sir. So you're basically correct in that. It just depends on the way that we would like to form the committee. So if we want to do sort of a more lax, flexible committee that doesn't have a lot of staff involvement, that, you know, criteria is just, is determined by administration, that type of thing. It would just be this, the city manager saying, yes, we're going to go ahead and do this as part of our, as part of our committees. And then if, if there's more control by the city, more city staff involvement, more reporting to the council, more information, specific budgets, that type of thing, that would be on the higher end of side by ordinance. And then just kind of in the middle there, we have like the executive order, which again, just kind of goes in between those two. So somewhere between a flexible, you know, limited city, city involvement to a heavy city involvement. And that would just kind of depend on what the committee wants to do and how involved they want staff to be, how involved the budget wants to be, that type of thing.
Wayne, if I could, looking at this matrix and, and considering, you know, well, which kind of committee would this be? It would be very helpful for me if we had a list of committees and which column they fall into and even defunct committees, so we could see those and maybe all the defunct committees fall into one column. And that's maybe a column that doesn't work so well. So when a new committee comes up, we could say, hey, you know, I think this would fit best here. And because it's more like these two that are already there, that would help me in the analysis.
Yeah, absolutely. We can do that.
I think I would mention two things. And that is if a committee is formed and it has a budget coming from the city, I think that should come to the council for approval. Second, if it requires a significant amount of time from city employees, the same, it should come to the city for approval. Beyond that, I think that if it's, doesn't have a budget, it doesn't have any significant requirement for staffing by city employees, that that can be done fairly easily and routinely and would not require council approval. If we have a couple of council members interested and they want to meet in the, you know, city offices and, you know, they just need someone to unlock the doors and maybe take minutes. Just the city manager can just say, okay, we'll just get this set up and take care of. Does that sort of approach make sense to the council members? I think I, I still want to do what Councilman Bueller said.
I think what it makes sense, but I think that's really more of a restatement of what this is. If we're going to have a budget, we need to have an ordinance and comes through. I mean, then of course the council approves it. I would just like to, as we're deciding, okay, this committee fits here or there. It's more by comparison for me. Especially since as Mr. Pyle said, we don't do this very often. If we have to go back in 10 years and remember what we do to form a committee, I think it would be helpful to say, you know, this kind of committee or this kind of committee.
Any other comments?
Agreed.
Okay. Hearing no further comments? We'll go to council calendar. Any issues there? We're starting to get some invitations to things that are probably going to be not in electronic meetings. Especially since some of those are out, you know, next month or the month after. No comments then? New business, future agenda items, potential?
I have one, Mayor. Some residents came and asked me if we will be awarding the Mayor's Star of Excellence.
For high school students?
Right, for the juniors this year. We missed the juniors last year. We could still award it to them as seniors because they're still in high school. But this is probably a point where we decide that we are continuing or not continuing.
So I actually do have some information on that, foreseeing that that it is the time of year for that question to arise. Nicole actually proactively went out and kind of contacted the, the, the various entities that participate in that or have in the past. Nicole, you want to give a report on that?
Yes, sir. So we did contact the four schools that we usually do. Of the four, there was only one that was willing to participate this year. The other three just said that due to students being online, some of them being in person, some of them were able to opt out of taking ACT scores, which is part of how we calculate whether or not a student gets the award. It looks like, and then we actually didn't even hear back from one school. So it just didn't seem like there was a lot of interest or the ability to do that again this year, although some of them did say that they would look forward to doing it next year. But this year, they just said that the information wasn't there.
I think Ms. K. Mac makes a good point since they've made the ACT not necessary for college. And that was, it was the Star of Excellence was like a factor between your GPA and your ACT. We'd have to maybe reevaluate the whole thing. If it's just going to be based on GPA, then it would just be based on GPA. But that also can favor those that don't take hard classes, that aren't really preparing themselves for higher education. They're just taking fun classes, fulfilling their requirements and getting As in everything else.
It would seem then, with that explanation from our city recorder who's talked with the schools, that in the very immediate future, we probably should not take much action. But I think it's a good thing and probably ought to be reinstituted for next year, certainly next school year. And have a reexamination of the criteria to ensure that we're getting those students. And I, just so happens, Councilman Christiansen's here in the chamber with me. And I'm looking at him as a former educator. Certainly we would look to him for some feedback on how to evaluate that and make it so it's meaningful. In other words, as your comment, let's make sure that it shows excellence in many ways.
Not just being there and getting an A because you attended. I think the schools have a valid concern this year too, because they, they did not, you know, they had no way of keeping track of even attendance many times. As they went back and forth between online and in person and backed online and three days in person and then backed online. And so I think they do have a valid concern in even putting forth names right now. If I were to, to say this year, Star of Excellence, it would probably be those that also got recommendations for scholarships and that, because those scholarship committees already went through all this evaluation. But that would be leaving a whole bunch out that possibly didn't want to apply for scholarships. So I think, you know, this may be a rebuild year for all of us and come back next year and get it started over again. And with the schools knowing from the first that we're going to be doing it so that they can keep track of the records that they need and things like that.
Okay, maybe just while Don was talking, he inspired me. And the Star of Excellence, you know, we, we want to wait on that. But if there is a student that has achieved significant success, maybe what we could do is not a Star of Excellence, but just a letter from the mayor, congratulations, like we do some of those things. But it would require that, that'd have to be recommended by the school and they'd have to make some statements to, you know, why they were achieving something. That would just be kind of individualized. They could do that, but we won't go out and ask for that. We will just say if anyone calls or calls a council member, we say, refer them to Nicole and we'll put together a little something, a letter, like we've done before.
I think that we should ask for it. If we just send a letter to the four schools and said, you know, we have previously awarded the Mayor's Star of Excellence. We didn't do it last year because of COVID. We're not doing it this year because of COVID. But if there are students that you would like to have us as a city recognize for their excellence, please send us their name and address and we'll send them, we could send them a letter or even a certificate that we print off, acknowledging their excellence. And I, that way we could easily open it up to 12th and 11th grade for this year. And hopefully for the juniors in 2022, we'll be back on track then.
Great. Like that. I like that. Okay, you got that, Wayne? Okay, you got that, Wayne?
Yes, sir.
All right. Any other potential future agenda items? Hearing none. Council reports.
The Association of Municipal Councils met today. They had a presenter, Wolf Summercorn, retired planner and very active in the area, talked to us about land use, this type of thing. One of the first things that he brought up was autonomous vehicles. And he mentioned that in the future, we, we need to start looking at how to design our roads. Russ, are you listening? How to design our roads for these autonomous vehicles, not only to, for the control and everything else. But, you know, if you are using an autonomous vehicle, he said it, the studies he's shown, he's looked at, it won't cut down on traffic. It'll probably increase traffic. Because there will be more people using them, but it'll take them from door to door and then go do something else. It won't have to sit in a parking lot and wait for them. And so we have to look at that. We have to look at the information technology that'll be around it. Because he said it'd have to be much more dense than it is right now with all of these autonomous vehicles tapping into the system and everything else. And even now, we're having trouble with 5G and them having the state legislature on their side to put up polls wherever they feel like and not listen to the cities or the land use in the cities or anything else. So he said, that's something that we need to start looking ahead for as we go into planning and that for the future. And then, of course, they, they also talked about affordable housing and how $400,000 homes can be affordable, which is what the lower end is right now on home sales and new homes. One of the things that I've never heard before is that in construction, there is actually a lack of skilled construction workers. There's plenty of nail pounders and things like that, but the skilled construction workers are actually lacking right now. And they're not being recruited like they have in the past. Much like every other, you can't even get a good server anymore at a restaurant because they don't want to work, some of them, or they're finding better paying jobs. Of course, the cost of materials and everything is also making it hard to be affordable. He discussed a few different ways, many of which we're doing already in the city and programs and helping with financing and actual credit for builders and that that, you know, would make them more amenable to building to, to our codes rather than just coming and saying, well, this is what we want to build because this is what we think will sell. And so a lot of that we're already doing, which I think is a credit to our CED department because they looked ahead and saw these things coming and worked with it to start with. But it was very interesting discussion. And I'd be happy to sit down with CED or anybody else and follow up with them if they want.
Okay, thank you. Anything else, Don?
No.
Any other council reports? Okay. Then next on our agenda is a review of a special redevelopment agency meeting. Mr. Pyle, are you going to introduce this or someone else?
I'm just going to turn this straight over to the presenter, sir, who is Mr. Nord, if I believe. I believe, if I'm correct. There he is.
Oh, there, yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Good afternoon, council. What we have before you are two applications for our business stabilization grant. You will recall, a little bit over a month ago, we brought a grant application before you for Valley Fair Mall. The grant was set up with the purpose of identifying our top tax producing entities and making sure that reinvestment into those properties is being made. We have found that often these businesses are not making adequate reinvestment into the properties. And if this reinvestment is pushed off 10, five, seven years, we face a dilemma where sometimes these businesses are often going, do we rather reinvest into this site? Or should we just look for somewhere altogether, somewhere else? And so our effort was to stabilize our top tier tax producing businesses that have high visibility by giving them this carrot. This carrot is a match grant. So it requires them to put up some capital as well and focus on raising the image of these businesses. Obviously, and understandably, their purpose and their goal is to, is create, generate revenue. And oftentimes, things like landscaping or a fresh coat of paint often gets just pushed off as much as possible. And so this grant really is set up to help catch their attention, make that reinvestment. And we have found also that when we do have a match, these businesses, once they put in their money into that, it becomes a priority for them. In the, in the event of landscaping, as soon as they start putting money in to replace outdated or old or dead landscaping, they're now paying attention to making sure that that doesn't die again, because they don't want to have to pay for it again. So really, this, this grant has been very successful for us in capturing the attention of our top tier sales property tax producers and making sure that they're doing adequate reinvestment into their properties. Valley for malls product that they were doing is quite a substantial remodel of the plaza and it's underway. So I invite you guys to go over there when you're able and see the, the work as it's being done. It's, it's going to be a nice addition to that plaza area. The application we have before you tonight is one of two. I'm going to, I'm going to take the first one and I'm going to have my colleague Jeff Jackson take the other. This first application is from Ken Garford dealership. And I'm going to try, I'm going to share my screen here. I'm getting better at this. And Ken, as you know, Ken Garf was purchased, purchased the Henry Day Ford dealership a few years back. And they hit the ground running and have done great with, with the dealership as a whole. They're, they have some good success out of that. They're, they're turning a lot of cars. They've actually run into a little problem where they don't have the many, as many new cars available because there's some manufacturer delays. And that's a, that's delays that are going across the board. It's not just Ford. We're seeing that from all of our dealerships, but largely their used inventory is, is being able to make up any shortages. So they've kind of pivoted while, while they're waiting for manufacturer cars to come in. They've been able to kind of still churn out some pretty high numbers based off of their used volumes. So the purpose of this grant was if you know that this, this site, there's, there has been a lot next to the Ford dealership is in between the Harman's and the Harman's office tower, just, just behind it, that has been a vacant dirt lot forever. And they've parked vehicles on this as long as I've been at the city. So now we're going on 12 years. And this lot is just, it's not, it's been an eyesore. It doesn't give off that top tier impression. So when people are driving by and they're looking at this dealership, it just doesn't give you that, wow, this is a really nice dealership. And if you've ever been in this Ford dealership, it is an extremely nice dealership inside. It's really, really one of the higher end buildings that we have. And frankly, what the Salt Valley has for an actual truck dealership. So the landscaping just simply wasn't up to snuff based off of what that building was and how much volume these guys are doing. And so we went out and we looked at all of the property and anything that was out of compliance, anything that was dead, and we just started taking notes. We went through and made a laundry list of all the things that they needed to improve to bring this dealership back up to, to where it should be and raise the image. And so I'm going to kind of give you an example of some of the things that we captured so you can get an understanding of what they're going to be replacing. And you can imagine as a customer coming into this dealership, you start to see these things. You might question, what, what's going on here? Why are, why is everything dying over here? Now, let me see if I can switch the lights. Okay. So what you see are just planners that are just forgotten. Obviously, nothing's been planted here for a while. There's probably some water issues. So we went through and made notations on everything that needed to be brought back up to current code and current compliance with our, our landscaping plans. This is the lot that I'm telling you about. The Harman's office building right here, and then Harman's is, is just to the right of this screen. But this dirt lot certainly doesn't give off the impression of a top tier dealership. And with the numbers that they're doing, this certainly should be something better. And so that's why this grant has been so successful is going to them and saying, hey, you need to pave this lot. I think it's met with a little bit of resistance. They, they, they're focused on just turning cars. And when we, we dangle this carrot out there, we catch their attention. They know this is an opportunity. And frankly, they want to be good community partners too. And we, we, we take this, what otherwise may not be a top priority, and we push it up to the top of the list. So we're getting the results that we want, which I think has been a great success so far. Just as you can see, gravel in the parking lot. It's just kind of an oversight, frankly, that they're just not paying attention to. You have some dead shrubs that need to be replaced. And the planners, you know, a lot of dead shrubs and grass. And it just needs a great overhaul to make it feel like it's back up to where it should be. And then you go out and this is what the dirt lot will look like once it's fully landscaped and paved and striped with lighting. It'll be a nice little addition to the, to the Ford dealership. And when they actually get resupplied with manufactured trucks, they'll have plenty of parking to, to put all these trucks in. Actually, it'll keep a lot of their trucks a lot cleaner as they have to keep them clean constantly. This dirt creates quite a problem. So if you recall, the, the grant is a match dollar amount. We did have initial cap of $200,000. We have re-raised that cap to 250 just based off of the crazy construction costs. We were seeing that the, the grant wasn't going as far as we were hoping. Every one of these projects, and Jeff will speak to his project, every one of these projects are coming way above what the initial match is. The project here that we're talking about is a 690,000 project to pave this and replace all the, all the landscaping. So they're far exceeding what their, their match requirement is. And for us, as West Valley City, we're excited to, to get that reinvestment into this site as it is one of our top tier dealerships. And we want to make sure that these guys stay here for a very long time. And it becomes a gem that it should be in the eyes of, of the West Valley City residents. So with that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Just one question, and that is, as you're doing this, are they looking, given that we're having so many drought issues facing us, are these water wise landscaping? And will it be able to be, you know, carried on so that they don't die?
Water wise landscaping, I'm sorry, I'm not familiar with what that is. But I, I, I did have planning and zoning involved with me and their landscaping plans are, are probably up to snuff. And they probably take those things into consideration with me. I don't know what that is, but I just know it's going to certainly look a lot better. I think they would have to, to plan on making sure that anything's kept up to current standards. And if it starts to die, we're going to be paying attention as well to, to make sure that, hey, this needs to be replaced.
When I said water wise, I just made that up as I was saying it. I just mean wise landscaping.
Smart.
Doing it in such a way that it can be maintained. In other words, there aren't these huge fields of grass.
Yes, yes, there, there are. Yeah, there is, there is a requirement of, of, they have to have a certain percentage of green space. But on this dealership, they're, they're, they're using as little of that as possible in terms of, of their, their minimizing the amount of, I guess, grass. You know, because they really want to park vehicles here. So they're, they're conforming to what our, our code says that they have to do. But they're certainly not creating any, any nice big fields of grass. It's, it's, it's kind of the minimum requirement that we have, that we have. And it's, it's going to be a noticeable difference for us. That street needs that investment. It's going to look a lot better around 4000 West. I think the Harmon Office Tower is going to be very related over this.
Hearing no further comments. Then we'll go to the next one, I guess.
Thank you, council.
Who's, oh, there he is.
Beautiful. Have you guys turned this over to me? Did you turn this over to me?
Yes, Jeff. Go ahead.
Yes, Jeff. Okay. I'm just getting my screen teed up here.
Okay.
All right. See my screen? Okay. So before I get started, I want to just say, you know, much of what Mark touched on will be true for my presentation as well. You know, we're looking at, you know, important sites. We're looking at important companies that are really fixtures in the city and how do we create a long-term opportunity to keep them here and not have them looking at other sites? You know, in this case, you know, the, those aspects that are pertinent to Carmel and Plaza cycle as far as site updates, landscape, paving, upgrade, beautification, all exist on this Carmel and Plaza cycle site as well. There's another dynamic that I'm going to go over that is really kind of unique and special for this opportunity that I want to touch on. And let me just give you some quick background here. So Plaza Cycle recently acquired a Salt Lake City based company named High Adventure Power Sports. Now, the Plaza Cycle site in West Valley is currently unviable to consolidate the two sites, the two companies because of the canal that separates the sites. I'll go over that in a moment. But our goal here is in addition to the beautification of this site and kind of long-term longevity of it, we're, we're also looking to consolidate High Adventure Power Sports to Salt Plaza Cycle located in West Valley City by making the existing Plaza Cycle actually viable for it. So let me just go into, let me show you the brands that we currently have in Plaza Cycle. So we have Kawasaki, Honda, CF Moto, Yamaha, Polaris, Timber Sled. So some of the most important brands in power sports. With the acquisition of High Adventure Power Sports, it brings into the family Ski Do, Seadoo, Riker, Spider, Can-Am. Anybody that understands power sports knows that Carmel and Plaza Cycle now is an epicenter for power sports. Having all these browns and brands under one roof creates an absolute epicenter. And so what we want to do is consolidate those two, bring the other one from Salt Lake here. And let me show you in a kind of a map, a kind of a visual of what we're talking about here. So in the red, you'll see the Carmel and Plaza Cycle in existence today. In the blue, you'll see the Highland Golf site. And then in the yellow, you'll see the canal that poses a problem. So the consolidation currently isn't possible because of the cost to connect the two sites. The lack of ability to store inventory is a problem. And then the inability to, to efficiently operate a showroom, sales and service center. Having merged the two brands, it causes a huge problem. So Highland Golf actually acquired, sorry, Plaza Cycle acquired the Highland Golf site next door and plans to convert it into an area where inventory can be stored. A service center can be located and provide for nearly 8,000 square feet of additional showroom. And then you'll see the yellow canal in between the two impedes the two from being able to connect and operate efficiently. So here is a solution to this problem. The solution is to pave the canal. You can see that it's, it's lacking in beauty. It's, it's overlooked. It's, it's, uh, it's not pretty. So the solution is to pave the canal. The Brighton Canal Company will authorize the piping and paving of two 100 foot bridges connecting the sites. That will make for connectivity, additional parking, efficiencies across the two sites for, to kind of enable a sales showroom, service center and be able to have inventory on site. And it will actually bring the ability to have more inventory or to, to consolidate the inventory of High Adventure Power Sports. And obviously, as Mark stated, this is important to, to kind of beautify. This is one of the, you know, it's on 3300 South as you approach Redwood Road. This is a, a big in and out of the city sort of corridor. And so the opportunity to clean this up and make it a meaningful experience for people coming in and out of the city and to Plaza Cycle is, is really important for us. I'm going to share the following screen with you guys so you guys can kind of see the overall project costs. So the initial discussion was, is how do we cover the canal? How do we, how do we pay for this canal? And it began to be, let's dream. What, what more can we do? What, you know, can we afford to do a showroom? Can we afford? And now the total project costs are 4.2 million. These guys are already making an incredible upgrade to the site. So this is the Highland Golf site. They've already sort of put their money where their mouth is. They want to invest in the community. is. They want to invest in the community in the long run. The conversation that we've been having with them about this match grant has turned into a, a full site redevelopment. And the opportunity to, to, to bridge this, this canal will bring the opportunity to bring the other consolidate, consolidate the two owners, ownerships, parcels, and, and bring them over to West Valley. So West Valley becomes the epicenter for power sports, but also cleans up this problem and creates kind of a long-term solution for Carmel and Plaza Cycle to exist successfully here. So we're, we're excited about the prospects. We want the two to come to West Valley City. We think this is a home for them. And, and we think this is a no-brainer as far as beautification and on the site. So super excited. Thanks for your time.
Hearing none. Thank you very much. Appreciate that update. Exciting things happening. With that, that we do not have a need for a closed session, so that completes our agenda for study meeting. Mr. Pyle, any last comments before we move on?
No, sir. We're, we're good. Thank you.
Okay. Then a motion to adjourn is in order?
Motion to adjourn.
Without objection, then we will be adjourned. And hearing no objections, that's unanimous and we are adjourned. We'll see you back here at 6:30 on the electronic highway.